I'd like to introduce the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
In accordance with the open public meeting act, the charges to Jeruwan had been proposed, provided as follows: On February 3, 2013-15, those were sent to the home district room, Star Ledger, local source, and the clerk of the municipality. By state law, there was no smoking permitted in this building at any time. In addition to the listed items in this agenda, this Board of Education may discuss and act upon other items not specifically referred to the period, as is allowed at the regularly scheduled monthly meeting under the sunshine law.
Thank you, roll call.
Mr. Struzel.
President.
Mr. Topaleski.
Here.
Mr. Alvarez.
Here.
Mrs. Viviana.
Present.
Mrs. Birch.
Here.
Mrs. Hudeck.
Here.
Mr. Colvis.
Here.
I have approval of the minutes of the public hearing and the workshop session and the regular meeting held on April 27, 2015.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Struzel.
Yes.
Mr. Topaleski.
Yes.
Mr. Alvarez.
Yes.
Mrs. Viviana.
Yes.
Mrs. Birch.
Yes.
Mrs. Hudeck.
Yes.
Mr. Colvis.
Yes.
Mrs. Ormon.
Yes.
Mr. Russell.
Yes. Okay, first off, we'll have comments from the public on agenda items only. This portion's on agenda items only. Saying none, close the comments from the public on agenda items only. Student, sorry, superintendent's report, Dr. Robitowsi.
Thank you, Mr. President. First, I'd like to start off by giving our monthly HIV report. Last month, we had 12 incidents reported. Three were validated as being HIV incidents. Four were not, and five were undetermined. The consequences for those incidents include detention and out-of-school suspension. The victims in all instances were counted. I'd like to remind our board members and members of the public that Thursday night is our annual All-City Music and Art Festival, which will be held at the Promenade. This is now the third year, Mrs. Querrey, that we've had it at the Promenade, I think?
Fourth.
Fourth year.
Quick here.
It's, as long as the weather cooperates, it's a beautiful night. Please come out and support our local music and art program. As you may have heard, Linden School District has recently been nominated, actually awarded, as one of the top 100 communities for music education in the entire United States of America. So it's a tremendous achievement, and some of that will be on display Thursday night.
Wonderful.
Definitely have that. Rain date, if it does rain, the rain date is June 2. The end of the school year is fast approaching. I can't believe that we just got back from more of the weekend. Last day of school for our students is June 22. Our high school graduation will be held at June 23. As we have done for the past three years, our graduation is scheduled for 10:00 a.m. at Tiger Stadium. If there is inclement weather at 10:00 a.m., we'll push the graduation till 1:00. And if the weather is still not cooperating at 1:00 o'clock, then we have to make the decision to move it into the gymnasium at Linden High School. Looking forward to it. I've talked to some people. I think the weather's gonna be okay, so we should be doing it well. That was kind of a joke, was the joke. Next Tuesday night, June 2, is our local scholarship awards night at Linden High School. It's an event that I would encourage you to come out to, just to see the amount of money that people in our local community and local businesses give out to our high school students. And all they have to do is fill out an application, and for some of them, interview. Hundreds of thousands of dollars in local scholarship money, in addition to all of the college scholarships that are given to our students, which some of the big ones, we also announce at those meetings. So, next Tuesday, June 2, at 7:00 p.m. The only conflict is if All-City has a, for inclement weather on Thursday night, then there will be the two events going on Tuesday night. And I also want to just get everybody a little excited for something that I've been planning and will continue to be planning over the summer. For the first time in the history of the Linden School District on September 3, we're going to have a major kickoff and welcome back to the school year for our faculty, staff, and community. The, my goal in doing that is, I've never, myself personally, as the superintendent, had a chance to address all my staff members at one time. So for the first time in the history of Linden, we're going to get every staff member, every teacher, every principal, in one place, not just to hear me speak, although I will say that, because if they know that, they're not coming. We're gonna start the day off with some professional development in their buildings. And we're gonna meet at a central location where I'm going to give a state-of-the-state, kind of a state-of-the-public schools address. And then we're gonna have a motivational speaker to talk about our mission and our vision for the, for the school year. We're gonna unveil our new five-year strategic plan to everybody. We're gonna unveil our new logo and our motto. We have a new logo and motto that's coming out. And then we're gonna follow up in the afternoon with lunch and some activities down at the football field. We're gonna do some barbecue, some grilling. We're gonna have some games. Then we're gonna have some team building, some team-building stuff.
What time's the party begin?
September 3.
But what?
Fun stuff starts when I get onstage to speak at 10:00 a.m.
That's when the real party kicks off.
I'm gonna take the day off.
And then the after-party is after 3:00. I don't know, I'll talk about that.
Who wants the food?
So, I don't wanna give all the details now. Just give me a little preview, Mrs. Hudeck, a little taste to get you a little excited. I'm gonna send an email out to all the staff saying, "September 3," with a question mark. Get everybody talking, get everybody signed up. It's going to be a tremendous, tremendous event. So, that's, that's my report, Mr. President.
Perfect, thank you very much. We will, actually, we have one attorney report.
It's a student matter, beginning with holding a, one-term suspension of evidence in the outcome of a criminal matter, as well as a child study team evaluation.
Have I motioned to approve?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Struzel.
Yes.
Mr. Topaleski.
Yes.
Mr. Alvarez.
Yes.
Mrs. Viviana.
Yes.
Mrs. Birch.
Yes.
Mrs. Hudeck.
Yes.
Mr. Colvis.
Yes.
Mrs. Ormon.
Yes.
Mr. Russell.
Yes. Thank you. Curriculum instruction, Mrs. Viviana.
The curriculum and instruction committee, upon recommendation of the superintendent of schools and the assistant superintendent, present the following 43 motions to the Linden Board of Education for approval. Items 1 through 11, approve year enrollment of out-of-district placements, the adjustment of tuition, the payment for related services as per child study team evaluations, services from various providers for the 2015-16 school year, approval of providers for speech evaluations, the transportation of students, and the approval of teachers to participate in the annual IEP meetings throughout the summer. Item 12 amends board action on past curriculum and instruction reports. Items 13, 14, and 15 accept curriculum and authorizes curriculum writing. Items 16 and 17 grant permission for use of facilities and school activities. Item 18 approves district field trips. Items 19 through 29 approve training for district staff. Item 30 approves professional development activities. Item 31 approves the online courses and summer school for credit recovery and new course credit for middle and high school students. Item 32 grants permission for a student from Italy to participate in the ESL summer program. 33 and 36 approve summer work hours for ESL teachers and language arts coaches to revise the curriculum. Item 34 grants approval for the Linden Adult School Program to partner with Union County Consortium for the 2015-16 school year. Item 35 recognizes and congratulates two Linden High School seniors for achieving the highest academic ranking in their class. Item 37 through 42 approve the start and end times and bell schedules for the elementary, middle, high, and alternative schools during regular sessions, delayed opening sessions, and early dismissal sessions. Item 43 approve the superintendent's determination and actions taken for all reported incidents of harassment, intimidation, and bullying discussed at the April 27, 2015 regular meeting. Mr. President, I have both curriculum and instructions, 1 through 43. I respectfully ask for a second.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Struzel.
Yes.
Mr. Topaleski.
Yes.
Mr. Alvarez.
Yes.
Mrs. Viviana.
Yes.
Mrs. Birch.
Yes.
Mrs. Hudeck.
Yes, but I have stayed on item 23.
Mr. Russell.
Uh, yes.
Was that me?
I was gonna say, we're off mine, yeah.
Mrs. Ormon.
Yes, but I have stayed on curriculum instruction item number nine, just for the one item for being.
Sorry, Mr. Russell.
And, uh, that'd be, yeah. Okay. Thank you, Mrs. Viviana. Management operations, Mrs. Hudeck.
Thank you, Mr. President. The management operations committee, upon recommendation of the superintendent of schools, presents the following motions to the Linden Board of Education for approval. Number one is the passing of an employee, Dr. Robitowsi.
Thank you, Mrs. Hudeck. Denise Levensky, I happen to know very well. She works for the Linden Board of Education for nine years as a part-time school aide, but was a substitute for many years prior to that. And every time I saw her, she, she knew my father, so she always had something nice to say about my father. And I always remember her. And she was taken, you know, too young. So we extend our most heartfelt sympathy to her family during this time.
Thank you, Dr. Robitowsi. Number two is the retirement. Can you...
Sure, Mrs. Hudeck. Ms. Shannon, math teacher at Linden High School, for at least the last 15 years. And I also had an opportunity to work with her when I was a high school teacher, vice principal, and principal. She's retiring. She will be missed by many at Linden High School. I want to thank her for her passion and dedication to our kids and our families, and I wish her all the best in her retirement.
Thank you, Dr. Robitowsi. Number three is to amend board action on past management operations listed below. Number four is the resignation of staff that is listed. The appointments are numbers 5, 6, 11, 12, 13, 14, 15, 23, 24, 25, 26, 27, 28, 29, 30, 31, 32, 33, 34, 35, 36, 37, 38, 39, 40, 41, 42, 43, 44, 45, 46, and less, if not least, 50. Number seven is leave of absence. Number eight is to approve the following transfers that are listed. Number nine is to approve the following reassignment within the building for the 2015-16 school year. Number 10 is to reappoint the following 12-month administrators. Number 16 is to reappoint the following full-time power professionals 2015-16 school year. Number 17 is to reappoint the following part-time power professionals for the 2015-16 school year. Number 18 is to reappoint the part-time school aides for the 2015-16 school year. Number 19 is to reappoint all P, part-time school aides as substitutes for the 2015-16 school year. Number 20 is to reappoint all department chairs for the 2015-16 school year. Number 21 is to reappoint all the non-tenured maintenance personnel. Number 22 is to reappoint the following non-tenured custodians. Number 47 is to recommend the following staff for the 2015-16 interscholastic and intermural athletic program at the high school and middle school. Number 48 is to recommend the following staff for the 2015-16 interscholastic and intermural athletic program at the high school. Number 49 is to approve the two jobs as described above listed. Mr. President, I have items 1 through 50, and respectfully ask for a second.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Struzel.
Yes.
Mr. Topaleski.
Yes.
Mr. Alvarez.
Yes.
Mrs. Viviana.
Yes.
Mrs. Birch.
Yes.
Mrs. Hudeck.
I vote yes on all, with the exception on number 10, Gregory Brasso, and number 13, Sharon Ziegler.
Mr. Colvis.
Uh, yes, but I have stayed on, uh, I don't know.
Mrs. Ormon.
Yes, on all items, with the exception of item number 34. Actually, just the one item on 34 for being your ladies' best, everybody else.
Mr. Russell.
I have stayed on number 30, uh, sorry, I've stayed on number 21. Yes on all items. Okay, and then I just want to point out and welcome number five. We have a few new staff members that were just approved tonight that are former Linden students. And it's just great to know that we can vote on some of these names and welcome them back to the district to work and get back to what they, they've gotten through their education here in Linden. So that's a great achievement that we get to do here tonight. So, moving on.
Yay!
Moving on, we have support operations. Mr. Topaleski.
Thank you, Mr. President. Support operations committee, upon the recommendation of superintendent of schools and business administrator, board secretary, presents the following 52 finance motions and five facility motions to the Board of Education for approval. Items 1 through 6 of regular board meetings, beginning with the acceptance of the business administrator board secretary certifications as of April 30, 2015, board secretary reports of the month of April 2015, financial reports or acquisitions for payments of salaries and supplemental payroll from May 2015, and draw warrants in the amount specified, prepared for persons' names on a list of transfers and adjustments in the month of April. 7 is treasury report for the month of April 2015. 8 is a student activities report for Linden High School for the month of April 2015. Item 9 is accept funds for the Danny A. Robitowsi EPP Superintendent Scholarship Fund as listed. Items 10 through 14 are to accept funds from Ohio File, Prince, Inc. and Ohio File, Pennsylvania, $157 under Chapter 193 for the 2014-15 school year, $20 from the state and New Jersey Division of Probation respecting student restitution, $6.72 from Merck Gives Back Employee Giving Programs for the benefit of Linden High School, donation of 137 pair of Under Armour Football Clubs from Brian Burgoyne, Program Director, NYC Police Athletic League, Inc., for the Linden High School Football Programs. Items 15 through 26 approve the installation of a new intercom system with interface to exist in Cisco Paw Manager in the amount of $22,652 by ACT Incorporated, work for the School Aid Project, a payment in the amount of $5,250 to ACT to reprogram test the entire old and new sections of the EST 3 alarm fire system at School Aid, $1,200 to cost calculations, Inc., Ramsey, New Jersey, for services rendered April 2 in the School Aid Project. Retroactive approval rental contract with Vinnie Bose , Shell Connecticut, for Connect Plus Mail Screen Solution Machine for a term of 16 months commencing May 1, 2015, based on proposal submitted April 27. The rate of $396.77 will be billed quarterly in the amount of $1,190.31. A contract with CDW-DST Vernon Hills for Cisco Wireless and Non-Wireless Network Equipment in the amount of $109,406.48 purchased through state-approved co-op for the School Aid because the contractor did not do the job. CDW Vernon Hills for telephones and voice card, the amount of $21,763 for completion of the School Aid Project, a contract with Interstate Waste Services, Baskin Ridge for garbage and recycling and trash disposal, based on low bid received May 13, for 16 sites as listed, a contract in the amount of $82,100 with Two Brothers Contract Company for the vinyl list passes for tile removal at Manus Middle School, based on low bid received May 13, a contract in the amount of $40,900 with Auto Communications for cable repair and additions at the School Aid, based on the quote received May 18. They're a T&amp;M contractor, a contract with University of Danlawn, Doorway, for moving services from St. Elizabeth's, the Hungry School, back to School Aid, 500 West Monkey Street, Linden, for the dates of June 27, 29, and 30, based on the quote received May 20. A contract in the amount of $1,965 with environmental remediation and management, fire alarm for indoor air qualities sampling at School 2, based on the quote received May 14. A contract for the 2015-16 school year with Union County Ed Services Commission and the Linden Board of Education for Transport, Special Ed, and non-public students for out-of-district placements. Item 27 is to renew the contract with BGIA Business and Government Insurance Agencies as an insurance broker of record for medical, dental, and prescription services for the 15-16 school year. 28 is approve the following contracts for employee benefits for the 2015-16 year, estimated annual premiums. 29 is approve renewal of contract with the New Zealand Group Mountainside to serve as architect of record for completion of the School Aid Project. 30 is approve renewal of contract with Thomas C. Rienzi, Architect Roofing Consultant, Bethlehem PA, for professional architectural roofing consulting services for July 1 through June 30, that are rated $125 an hour not to exceed $200,000. 31 is approve reappointment of Energy for America Roseland in the amount of $75,996 to provide professional engineering facilities management program services for the period of July 1 through June 30, 2016. 32 is approve renewal of contract with Sable Cooney Company as school order to perform the 2014-15 school audit at a cost not to exceed $42,575, based on a proposal received May 14, 2015. 33 is approve renewal contract with environmental remediation and management for asbestos management coordination for the 15-16 school year, effective July 1, 15 through June 30, 16, the amount of $16,000, based on proposals received May 7. 34 is to approve renewal of a contract with Hartland School Solutions Princeton for the annual licensing with the district-wide POS system in the amount of $3,968. 35 is to renew the contract for food services for the 15-16 school year with Pomtonian Food Services for administration and management courses, year, uh, costs, year three of five, and to approve the student price lists from Pomtonian for the 15-16 school year. 37 is to approve the following resolution authorizing Linden Board of Ed to enter into a clear pricing agreement with the National Regional Education Services Commission. 38 is to approve an agreement with YMCA of Eastern Union County, Doorway, for the after-school program in the amount of $3 a day per, per school at Schools 1, 2, 6, 9, and 10 for the 15-16 school year. Additional schools may be added at a later date. 39 is a motion designated official newspaper for Linden Ward to be the home newsroom, Star Ledger, Union County local source, for the 15-16 school year. 40 is a motion designated the following signatories for the account listed below from July 1 through June 30. 41 is a designated following depositories in Union Bank, Wells Fargo, and Northville Bank. 42 is a motion to approve a resolution authorizing professional service contract between the Linden Board of Ed and the Weiner Lesniak as General Labor Council and Council for People's Services as special project. 43 is a motion to approve a resolution authorizing professional service contract between the Linden Board and Schwartz, Simon, Ellison, and Stelso as special council for facilities and construction. 44, in accordance with the NJAC 6A, 23A-BH9.3C14, authorizes advantage for all legal services in an amount not to exceed $350,000. 45 is a motion to approve the following resolution designating DeCaro Ravino as the board architect of record for the current, architect of services in amount not to exceed $100,000. 46 advertising for quotes bids and state contracts during the 15-16 school year. 47, be resolved in accordance with ATNA, ATNA-22, the Linden Board of Ed rejects all bids for data wiring on the basis of that the Board of Education wants to revise the specs for goods and services. 48 is the bids for athletic supplies and equipments for full sports. The bid opening date was May 20. Item 49 quotations is listed, comprehensive elevator preventive, program of a maintenance repair. The bids were opened on May 20th, Jersey Elevator Company. B is integrated pest management, Alliance Commercial Pest Control, and maintenance repair for master and secondary clocks, system electronics, prospect New York, uh, Prospect Park, New Jersey, excuse me. Item 50, in accordance with ATNA-42, renew the current times and materials contract with the same terms and conditions of the original contracts, up to an increase of 2.63 percent based on services performed, A, maintenance and repair work, time and materials, Euler Repair and Cleaning, Kellon Inc., Carpenter Repair, W.D. Snyder Electrical Repairs, Electrical Applications, Inc., HBAC, Kellon Inc., basin repairs and installation, W.D. Snyder, painting, Ascari Construction, plaster, W.D. Snyder, plumbing repairs, United Welding Plumbing Roofing Maintenance, and league repairs, Roof Management. B, maintenance and repair work, time, materials for fire alarm and alarm communication system, fire suppression, absolute protective systems, security, RKC, security, and public address and Two A's Salto Elevator Company. Item 51 is declared following as surplus equipment obsolete and or unusable to be disposed of in accordance with district policy 3260. Item 52, appoint ground and brown public risk advisors as broker of record for property and casualty work compensation and student accident insurance for the 2015-16 school year. The facilities report, thank God it's short, is a, a man board action taken in the meeting, reflecting day changes for activities listed. 2 is a retroactive approval of use of facilities at no charge requested by J.G. Dooley, Fire Chief, Linden Fire Department. And items 3 through 5 are use of facilities at no charge requested by Barris and Lindstrom staff, and a recreation supervising for a variety of activities. Mr. President, we know questions or further questions on the items 1 through 52, finance and agenda 1 through 5 of facilities for approval, and we respectfully seek a second.
Second.
One, everybody, one.
53.
52.
52.
1 through 52. There is a, there is a motion, there is a second. Roll call, please.
Mr. Struzel.
Yes, on all except item 29.
You said no on 29?
Yes.
Mr. Topaleski.
Yes.
Mr. Alvarez.
Yes.
Mrs. Viviana.
Yes.
Mrs. Birch.
Uh, yes on all except for 52.
Mrs. Hudeck.
I vote yes on all except for number 40, bringing in number 52.
Mr. Colvis.
My vote, uh, yes, well, um, except for no and number 52.
Mrs. Ormon.
Yes.
Mr. Russell.
Um, yes on all, no on 52. I do want to thank the finance committee and Kathy for the RFPs that they go out for the professional services. You guys did an excellent job. And glad to see that the broker did get a better rate on property and category for this year.
Just for the broker, there's 52 on the agenda.
Oh, right.
Just add.
Um, okay. Facilities, we do. Planning and policy, Mrs. Ormon.
Okay, thank you, Mr. President. The planning and policy committee, upon recommendation of the superintendent and assistant superintendent of schools, submit the policies for first and second reading to incorporate new features required by code and law and to elaborate our local district, district policies. For first reading, we have policy number 1323, gifts to students, get to revise to notice reflect our current district practices. For second reading, we have policy 4115, supervision, it changes, there are changes throughout for updates to professional development requirements under TEACH-NJ. Policy 4123 and 4222, paraprofessionals and non-instructional aides. Content was added explaining the requirements for statements of assurance to the ECS. 51, 5131.1, harassment intimidation and bullying. It's revised at a section for parents to participate in the HIV interview process and parents who attempt to deny access to their child for the HIV interview process. Policy 51, 41.8, sports-related concussion and head injury. It has been revised to include cheerleaders with student athletes and consolidate some of the contact, content. And also, I believe, band members were added to that also?
Yes.
Yes, you didn't have that written down, but band members were added also. 51, 41.21, administrative medication, added two new sections, emergency administration of epinephrine for first... administration of epinephrine for first-time allergic reactions at school and liability. Sixty-one fourteen, emergencies and disaster preparedness, added a section called school safety and security plan. Sixty-one forty-five point one and sixty-one forty-five point two, intramural competition, in terms scholastic competition, added artistic expression and revised special education students to be included and, um, and to be included with reasonable accommodations. Sixty-one seventy-three, home instruction, changes have been made throughout to reflect recent changes in law and code, most significantly, the ability for districts to use online educational programs. Policy seventy-one ten, long-range facility planning, changes to reflect requirements for the LRFP. I submit policies for first and second reading and respectfully ask a second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Strazella.
Yes.
Mr. Tapalasby.
Yes.
Mr. Alvarez.
Yes.
Mrs. Beviana.
Yes.
Mrs. Burke.
Yes.
Mrs. Hudeck.
Yes.
Mr. Collis.
Yes.
Mrs. Orman.
Yes.
Mr. Russell.
Yes. Thank you, Mrs. Orman.
Mr. Russell, I would ask at this time that the board has a discussion on, um, possible revisions if any to the dress code policy.
Discussion.
Just so everybody's aware, earlier today, the planning and policy committee chaired by Mrs. Orman met with, um, most of our principals and some of our vice principals, received feedback, uh, from, from them on what they think is working, what they think is not working. Ultimately, I explained that the Board of Education is the policymaking entity. As superintendent, uh, I need to recommend changes, but ultimately, the board makes policy. And I want the board to make an informed decision before they make any changes. Ultimately, I will support what the majority of the board wants, um, as long as we believe that what we're doing is in the best interests of our children and our parents. So having said that, Mrs. Orman as the chair, would you want to start off the discussion as to maybe what we heard today, and everybody can have a say.
Okay, um, well, first of all, thank you, I'll have to, so we allow you to have the floor. Um, there's been a lot of, um, concern in the district about the overall dress code going over policy. Overwhelmingly, the elementary school teachers are in favor of having the dress code slash policy. It seems to work not only for the community, um, it works for the parents, it is cost-effective. We had a lot of data that shows why it works at that particular level and, um, why it should be supported, like I said, from plus factors and just the overall, um, input from the parents who ultimately are the ones who are sending their children to school. When it gets to the middle school, it seems to change a little bit, um, and that's par for the course because how teenagers are, um, you know, five teens and yet they're a little bit more difficult. The secondary level, especially the high school, the consensus seems to be that the more freedom you give them in dress code, the more they lose their minds, and it just goes crazy. One, the high school vice principal, he said that there were many, many more infractions on just being just way off kilter, when they opened up the door and said, you can have multiple choices, you can wear T-shirts, he says it just got even more out of control. I'm a firm believer that you're never going to make everyone happy, you're just never going to make everyone happy, and that's just that from any aspect, but I'm also a firm believer that the majority has the right to make the decision. And if we feel as though overwhelmingly the majority of our district has a particular feeling, we need to listen and just hear them thoroughly what they're saying. Like I said, there's always going to be differences of opinions, and we're never going to make everyone happy, but, um, I was just, um, I was actually, um, surprised at the overwhelming, um, positive feedback from the schools because I was actually led to believe that none of the schools wanted it. I was pretty much, oh, no, 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 I talked to everybody, and this one doesn't like that, one doesn't like it, and that's not what we heard from the principals. The principals were actually saying that they're in the high nineties in terms of compliance, and that if they're getting two or three, and even on the elementary level, it's not so much the parents don't want to comply, usually when they get their infractions, it's because, oh, I didn't get to the laundromat and I didn't get a chance to wash the uniforms, um, or, you know, um, oh, I just forgot, you know, or, you know, just little minor things, but it's not because, um, the principals are saying that the parents just want to just outwardly defy the policy. It's always something like I said, oh, my guy just gave me to the laundromat this particular weekend, so Suzie doesn't have a white shirt, but overwhelmingly, and like I said, I am so flexible to listen to what people are saying, but overwhelmingly, the elementary schools are saying it works. We only had one that said that it didn't, only one that said that it didn't, and that's pretty much a recap of our, of the report. Of what the meeting, of what the meeting had. Anyone else, does, I mean, um, Mr. Strazella was here for part of it, Mrs. Burke was here for part of it, and Mr. Alvarez was here for the entire meeting, and, and Mr. Collis was here for the entire meeting, and if, I mean, did I not communicate what we've heard? I'd say I was more surprised with the high school, that when they said that they just like really, really relaxed it, that it was works by not having more structure than what they could ever, than they imagined.
I, I think that the high school and the middle schools have to readdress this seriously and, um, work out some sort of a, uh, more cohesive policy because obviously they're having a lot of issues. My main problem with them was the fact that they're spending an ordered amount of time dealing with discipline of a minor nature, all right? I'm, I'm not saying that if somebody comes dressed to school inappropriately, it's not minor, but it's minor compared to a lot of other things that could be going on, or taking away from the school day or whatever, um, that needs to be looked at. With the elementary schools, you're right, the principals almost unanimously agree that the policy worked. However, I'm inclined to think that maybe individual schools need to address their individual needs, so we either have to go all the way with the elementary school and have one color for everybody, or let the elementary schools individually decide how they want their, their schools to, um, to look, how they want their kids to come to school, you know, it's a tough, this is a tough call.
Right, but I, and I agree a hundred percent, but we can't have one school that dictates the policy for the whole district.
No, you can't, but you should have the individual schools dictating what they want for their schools, and if, um, the vast majority of them want what they have, then what are we going to, I mean, and, and principals saying it's working, the parents are happy with it, fine, schools that aren't, you have to look at it in terms of, well, what can we do to make those parents happier with it? So, I mean, you know, we try to please everybody, you can't please everybody, but you got to try your best.
But we did, but we did, I feel as though we did our due diligence, um, from what I understand, a survey went out to, to the, to teachers, I was told that the teachers or the administrators had an option to answer questions as to how many times they have infractions or whatever, you know, and then, um, the best thing for us to do, we want, you know, you've got to get it straight from the horse's mouth, and we asked the principals, um, and the ones that were interested showed up to, to voice their opinion, you know, and it's just a matter of not, as, it's just a matter of whether or not we as a board are going to listen or just, you know, just to change it, I mean, I'm going to be honest with you, um, I like the simplicity and I like, I just, just as a person, and I like the economics behind it. I've never paid more than ten dollars for a pair of pants because I don't shop at Nordstrom for my kids' school clothes. I shop at Old Lady, I shop at, you know, you know, Kidstown in, I mean, um, Kids World at the Jersey Gardens Mall, I never paid more than ten dollars for a pair of pants for my daughter, and I believe the max twelve dollars for Chase, never more than eight, seven ninety-nine for a shirt, so I can shop for the whole school year for under a hundred bucks or roughly a hundred bucks per kid, um, so I understand that, that I'm in value of it, and, um, there are a lot of parents throughout our city that are economically strapped, that, that appreciate it and, and really like it, but like I said, it's up to the board, I mean, we have to come up and decide, and we have to be fair and honest with the way we make our decision, because ultimately, this is going to get back to the schools, it's going to get back to the districts, and we want to make sure that when we come upon our conclusion, that we are fair and honest and transparent in the way that we make the decision, because those things come back to bite us in the butt, and it comes back sometimes to bite us in a way that we just, just don't want them to.
Thank you, Mrs. Hudeck.
Well, initially, I was never in favor of the dress code or the uniform policy. I voted for it because it was what everybody seemed to want. I was from the seventies, and I learned what it was like to finally get to wear pants to school back, and that was a long, long time ago. So, I, I'm totally repugnous, I, I never felt it really should have been enforced, not everybody really wants it, not everybody wants to wear khakis or navy blue pants. Should, should the kids actually be dressed appropriately to go to school? Yes, but I think parents should be responsible for what they have on their children. An incident that we had this year was my granddaughter grew in December, and it's very difficult for a girl to get a jumper or a skirt in December, because, it, it's true, it is, they're not out, they're no longer out, so it's, it's tough. You can buy them, you're going to spend forty bucks on it for a little kid's outfit, a little jumper, and that's a lot of money, so if your kid grows and there's no, um, I, I don't know, I think some of the schools have them where they actually, when they're finished with their uniforms, they recycle them, and the kids share them, it, not everybody has them, um, so that was an issue that I personally ran into.
I was going to say, I appreciate your comments, but, um, Kidstown at the Jersey Gardens Mall has a uniform section three hundred and sixty-five days out of the year with jumpers, skirts, everything that is economically priced, and they're received, we get coupons, um, for the clothes, so they're like even less, I don't know what forty-dollar jumper, but I don't buy forty-dollar jumpers for myself, but I'm just trying to say that they're just...
But I'm just saying, that's what we might look at, it was in the catalog, Jason Penn catalog, so, well, unfortunately, if they're not out, you have to find them, but not everybody likes that, you know, so, I mean, and it's a choice, do they look nice? Yeah, but not all the time are those uniforms clean, um, you can go in a classroom where some of the kids have three of them and their mother and father get to do their laundry or whoever's watching them, and you can go in and you can pretty watch this from the smell, and it's not only in one school, it could be in any of them, you know, so, I don't know, there's a lot of things I think you have to think about.
Thank you, Mrs. Hudeck, Mrs. Burke.
Thank you, Mr. President. So, my take on the dress code policy, when it was first implemented or brought to our attention, it was a pilot over at School Nine, and it was sold to us from the board that there would be no consequences to the children. Uh, eventually, they moved it from the elementary schools up to the middle schools and then up to the high school, and when that happened, down came the gamut, as they call it, and there were infractions imposed on it, um, and those infractions, if some of you aren't aware, are if the children are not wearing the dress code, they will go to ISS, which means they're losing educational time, valuable educational time, and if the child's a repeat offender, they are in ISS every time. I just don't know when our district decided to put clothing ahead of educating our children. I find that parents have come to me and said they can't go to garage sales and buy clothing because they can't find the pants or the pillows or whatever it is, so it is a hardship for them money-wise because they can't shop at the stores because where they shop are either thrift stores or at garage sales. I feel that the administrators, at least one of them that I did get to hear, said the majority of his morning, three hours, dealing with what child is wearing the, the wrong shade, or what child is wearing the wrong colored pants, or what, I, I think they have better things to do, and as far as the teachers, we didn't, we don't know whether they like it or not because we did not poll them as of, as of yet, however, I feel that they should be starting their day off educating our children, not checking their clothing. I think we just celebrate it more in the day, and the soldiers that are out there fighting for us fought for our freedom and our rights, and it's a public school, and one of the principals said something about when you walk into a school, it's like a private school, and we're not a private entity, we're a public school system, so I just feel that the dress code is not favorable for our children.
Thank you. Any other?
I have, I also have another problem.
Hold on, hold on, hold on. Any other member that wants to speak?
We also heard from a principal that stated that without having the dress code, somebody was actually able to walk into the class, into the school and just blend in, um, and literally go and beat another kid up, um, and had, we had the dress code, that person would not, would have stuck out like a sore thumb, um, and, you know, and that was just, that was just one, that was just one principle, that was just, but it was relaxed, and it was like almost an all-homes bar, anybody who wore anything, pretty much, they're not really following it, but that was just the one, that was just the one spin, and then the one principal, and I do want to add some, um, clarity to that, yes, he said it looked like a private school, but he also said a lot of other things, and his information was data-driven, he had statistics that show that, no, his teachers are not spending a, a crazy amount of time, um, administering, uh, discipline or dress codes. Every teacher that sat up there, every principal that sat up there said it's up in the high nineties, the compliance, you know, and, um, and like I said, this is just my, what I heard, I said it on the meeting, and this is what I heard. We had one teacher, one principal that, yes, that had a stack this high of infractions, but he was the only one that had the issue in his school, and like I said, I'm not going to lie, I'm going to be just straight, direct, and honest because I have nothing to lose. My children are in elementary school, my kids, they're easy, it's not my, I'm not fighting for, for my kids, I just listened to every single other principal that was in this meeting and what they said, and I understood English very well, it was like working in their school, their school, like I said, I can attest for the ones that had the stack this high of problems, but every other principal said it works, they get the cooperation from the parents, they get the cooperation from the students, it works in their schools, like I said, with the exception of the school in school. So, we have a decision to make, ultimately, we will sit back and we will talk about it, um, as a board and decide what we're going to do with this policy. It does need some tweaking, there need, there's some things that really need to be addressed, and we will, um, we will, we'll, we'll take care of it.
I think it's important that I let the board know about our responsibility as per the policy. To go back in history a little bit, and I certainly wasn't in this position, and I was an elementary school principal when I was first enacted, the public school district couldn't just mandate from top down that there be a dress code policy. The policy actually said that if it came from the parents, it had to come from the parents of the school, and so initially in this district, it came about, as Mrs. Burke stated, it was a pilot initially, because I guess a majority or that all of the parents had supported the idea, and then later it went from each school, so each school, that's why we have a different dress code at each school because it came from each school, and each one did their own unique thing. So my question is, and I'll ask Mr. Tavikin to elaborate a little bit, because the policy actually grew out of each individual school, can the board by its own very action just maybe go away at each school? I don't know, meaning initially, the board can't pass a dress code policy, can't make it happen, right? You can't just mandate it, so it came from each school. I guess the board could just wipe it out as if it never existed, or, I don't know.
There's two issues that are going on here, and you're, with all humility, you're kind of confused.
All right, don't lie. Don't confuse people.
Dress codes and uniform requirements are related, but not the same thing. Dress codes by law are a board policy issue, a board can mandate what its dress code will be, meaning, you know, certainly skirts and whatever else there might be, you can't have, you know, certain colors or, uniform requirements, on the other hand, are very stat, are very specific statutory equations, and the statute says that it is a local school-based decision, and it is a ground-up approach, so while Board of Ed by policy can dictate dress code, it cannot necessarily dictate uniform requirements. If a local school decides it wishes to have a uniform requirement, it brings that forward
If a local school decides it wishes to have a uniform requirement, it brings that forward and then there's a board discussion and there's adoption or not. To the extent that the board wishes to amend its dress policy, that is its prerogative and it may do so at any time it wishes. To amend the policies, two readings and you move on and whatever it may be, will be. However, my concern is that if you're going to alter a uniform requirement that was adopted by, based upon the majority wishes of staff and parents, that the decision of the board without some level of quantitative data, some empirical information that the majority of staff and parents wish to do away with the uniform requirement, that the decision of the board will be collaterally attacked, if you will, as being arbitrary and capricious. That's not to say that you can't do away with uniforms, that's not saying you can't modify uniform requirements. My concern is that we make informed decisions and that that would require some level of, some empirical data indicating how the local school community feels about it. Yea or nay, it doesn't, you know, I have no horse misery, so it doesn't matter to me. The dilemma you have with a top-down approach to uniform requirements is that if the board does away with uniforms and next year a local school says, well, we want the uniform, we get whipsawed into this recurring battle, if you will, between the local community sentiments and then a given school and the will of the board. That becomes very problematic to me.
So hypothetically, could you have in a district, you could have one school that has no uniform and some schools that do?
Correct.
Hypothetically.
Hypothetically.
Now, one more clarification. I'm not sure that what we currently have is a uniform policy.
It's not.
It's really a dress code policy.
But each school has their own...
Dress code.
Their own policy.
I know, I know, I know.
I was on the committee.
Hold on, hold on. People, go ahead. Simfer, then Ray and Ms. Birch.
I was at the initial meeting for school number nine when they did their fashion show. And they came, the kids came out in little, in the uniforms and it was a very nice night, nice uniforms and everything else. But at the time, the superintendent that was sitting at the helm had to get up and said that we cannot mandate this, we cannot make you do this. And my feeling is, we have asked them to dress that way, but we really can't enforce it. And as, when I was president sitting there, there were problems at the time where teachers were being written up because the kids would come in the building at 7:30 in the morning in their uniform. And then they'd go to gym or lunch or wherever they went and came back in not dressed appropriately. So that became a grievance and that became an issue. So I have a lot of issues. I don't think a kid, a little kid, should be stuck on a bench because they didn't come dressed with a golf shirt on and a pair of khakis. It's not Catholic school, it's not. And it bothers me that little kids are punished for that. A little kid can't come to school with, they're dressed accordingly. It's not their fault if their parents didn't wash their uniform or do whatever. So I don't know, it bothers me.
Hold on, hold on. People, Mr. Tapleski?
I also was on the board when this policy was developed. The policy itself calls for, it, this is where it's calls for a code of uniform dress. And so basically what they did was they say, you can wear a couple different pair of pants color-wise and a few different color shirts and that's the dress code. And girls were allowed to wear squorts and jumpers. I guess the boys could too if they chose to. But that was all that it was about. And that's all it's ever been about. And at the time we were doing this, one of the things that we did before we even proceeded with the pilot was to change the dress code for the staff. Because the feeling was, there's no way you're gonna get kids to be able to come to school dressed properly if the staff is dressed improperly. And so that's when jeans were out and all that stuff. So I don't think it's unreasonable to expect the kids to come in pants that aren't jeans and shirts with a collar, it's not that big a deal. And I don't think it stifles my creativity by dictating the kind of clothes that I have to wear when I'm at work and for kids, school is work. Whether we want to agree to that or not, that it is. That's their job to learn.
The policy is, it's now written, and there's no pertinent coincidence that I have it in front of me. It says that, that will include a uniform moes of student dress. It doesn't require a specified uniform per se. It also says that the recommendations coming, that will be made by the school principal are forwarded to the board of education through the approval of the superintendent and that there must be provided with that some level of evidence that a majority of teachers and parents are supportive of the proposed code. So in order to change this policy, you can change the verbiage and the wording of this policy. You can do whatever it is that you wish as a majority of the board. My caution, I guess, for lack of a better word, my concern is that the policy as it now stands requires three months' notice, that's right out of the gate. So whatever you do is for this school year's debt. So whatever we're talking about is gonna be for next school year no matter how you cut it, okay?
2015, 16 school year?
No, 15, it's three months' notice. So it's whatever, June today, I believe, no, it's May 26th, for all intents and purposes.
You have to do two readings?
Well, you need to, by your own policy right now, you need two readings, number one, number two.
What's the name of the first reading?
That's less than three months' notice to the parents who are already with the students.
We could do many of the whole.
So we could have a special meeting?
We could do their hearings.
If the majority of the board wants that?
Again, that's, that's exactly why I'm saying it. So you, so you can back into whatever it is that you want the parent to do so you have enough time maybe for the community as well. Because those are the folks that, you know, matter the most.
Well, you have to live with nobody at this school year.
So number, number two is that it requires, at least as it's currently configured, that there be some evidence of what the majority desires are. And it may be that the principals feel one way and you folks may feel another and some other folks feel yet a third way. Absence some type of survey that's coming out to the parents, I'm not sure that you have a real cogent understanding of what the community wishes to have happen. And it's not that terribly difficult, survey monkey, I think they're called. They're not, it's not a terribly difficult thing to do. And it would insulate the board, which is the only thing that I, you know, can't really care about is maybe insulating the board against liability, is that you make informed decisions. No one cares what your decision necessarily, I don't care what your decision is, as long as it's an informed decision, you need to make an informed decision, that's the priority here. Right or wrong is for someone else to judge somewhere down the road. But without some level of empirical data, you just don't understand how you make an informed decision. That's what the community wishes to have happen.
Last two, last two speakers, it's Mrs. Birch and then Mrs. Armon.
I just wanna defend our principals real quickly, okay? Because I don't want anybody to be misinformed who's watching this on television. Our principals don't sit children on benches in elementary school when they're doing something wrong or they don't have their uniform. Not one principal that came to this meeting remotely even said that they disciplined a child improperly for not having the uniform on. They said they're compassionate, they understand that it could be a laundry issue. Not one person said that they will make a child sit out for not having on the right shirt or right hand. So just that the public is clear on that. Our principals are much better people than that, they would never do that. So I'm defending all of the principals out there.
Okay, so then my question would be, then why is the policy in place if they're not going to have consequences? If the elementary school principals are not giving the children consequences for not wearing the uniform or the dress code, why is it in place?
They were saying they're compassionate, that most of those times when their children aren't in compliance, it's a laundry issue or it's some sort of extenuating circumstance.
Because they may fall home to the parent. But my, my question is, what young child wants to be brought down to the principal's office, looked up and down, told they're not in uniform, had their mom called? It's a whole big process and it's not fair to the children.
Our principals don't treat the kids that way.
That's what happens, that's exactly what happens.
I'm gonna touch this, I'm gonna touch this right here because it's, I understand that this was gonna be brought up tonight and we did have a signing policy meeting earlier. I will meet with the superintendent this evening and we will look at a possible committee of the whole for just this topic only and work with the attorney just to make sure that all the guidelines are followed. I do wanna move on with the rest of the meeting and we will keep on this because this is more of a own-topic discussion than with everything else that we have going on as well.
Mr. Tavikin, could you give me a written opinion as to what process this board should take place?
To revise the policy as it relates to dress code or a uniform issue?
We have a dress code, not a uniform.
Well, look, the uniform issue again, that's confused, not confused or...
We know that, yeah, we know we can have a dress code.
Right, but you can't mandate a uniform unless you're going to pay for those uniforms.
After here.
So, yes, the answer is yes.
I'd like to move on to report to Special Committee's delegate, state delegate, Mr. Tapleski.
No report at this time.
Thank you, sir. County delegate, Mr. Strzella?
No report at this time.
Thank you, sir. Uh, sorry, Educational Services Commission, Mrs. Armon. Thank you very much. Uh, no, and Negotiations Committee, anything, Mrs. Viviana?
We signed a memorandum of agreement with the custodial and maintenance team and we are currently negotiating with the Administrators and Supervisors Association. Our next meeting is June 1st.
Great. Thank you, Mrs. Viviana. EST, EST for students, Mr. Tapleski?
No report at this time.
Thank you. And EST for Special Education, Mrs. Suda?
No report.
Thank you very much. Uh, any unfinished business? Any board member comments or new business?
Yes, I'd like to just take the time to congratulate our newly hired staff for the upcoming 2015, 2016 school year. Bella and Nina, as I know them personally. But I would like to just take a couple of minutes to speak of Kimberly Morak, who has a very special place in my heart. Many years ago, I met Pat Morak, her mother, because she was just the most amazing secretary in school for her. She was just warm and compassionate and she always had a tendency to look at after Kira knowing that Kira had special needs. So Pat asked me, and this was during the time when board members did get applications for part-time jobs, if I would be ever so kind as to give one of my applications to her daughter. And I was like, sure, absolutely, you know, thank you for looking for Kira, you know, have your daughter apply for a job. Kim did get a job and it was just absolutely great. She did a wonderful job working for our district and everyone was pleased with her. Fast forward, my daughter, who doesn't test very well, never does well on New Jersey ASH, was in some need of tutoring for math. And I had asked the recommendation of the current superintendent, I mean, the board superintendent who he thought would be a good tutor. And he recommended a young lady by the name of Kimberly Morak. I had no idea that it was the person that I had given an application to. Well, Kim came to my home three days a week, tutored my daughter in math, did such a phenomenal job, blended in with our family so well that I would even have her babysit on occasion. And such a warm rapport with my family that my son, who hasn't seen her in so many years, remembered her. But it was just wonderful because it was the first and only time that my daughter passed New Jersey ASH and was above proficient with Kim's help. So I would just like to especially welcome Kim to our district. I know the type of person that you are, I know the type of teacher that you're going to be. I love you and I think you're just amazing. Congratulations and welcome aboard.
Any other members?
I would just like to say, sorry. I would just like to congratulate all the, the new teachers, the new hirees, especially Arlen the Knights. Proud that they're coming home and...
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing none, may I move into adjourn?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.